Okay.
Okay, sure.
Welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of June 9, 2020. The meeting will take place in the webinar format through Zoom. The chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission is Jeff Pritchard. Also, the co-hosts for the meeting are planning staff Deb Jones and Diane Lloboski. Cara Hovland is also in attendance to record the meeting. Anybody speaking tonight should actually state their names prior to speaking. The applicants or consultants will be unmuted by the host when the application is up for the agenda and promoted to a panelist, and at that time they will be able to share or download information and answer questions. The applicant should state their names prior to speaking each time. Attendees for the webinar are the public and any non-panelists. There are no public hearings tonight, so attendees will only be able to speak during public communications. Attendees will be asked to raise their hand, which is an icon at the bottom or the top of the Zoom screen. And then the attendees will be called upon by the host one at a time and be able to speak. Attendees should identify themselves before speaking. They can also submit comments to the Planning and Zoning Commission at any time after this meeting tonight. And we'll have roll call.
So I'll call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. First item is a roll call. I'll just go down the list of names. Michael Kane, he's not here, I think. Is he?
No.
Well, Halzon, Barbara Tarbox.
Yeah.
Sue Sutherland. There's Kevin Fitfall.
Yep, here, Jeff.
Okay, I didn't, I can only see so many names on the screen. Okay, so we have. And Steve's missing, so I'll sit Kevin to sit for Michael Kane. And we have enough for quorum. I'll move on to next items, no public hearings. No consideration of public hearings. Next item is approval of minutes of previous meetings. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 26, 2020 meeting. Does anyone have any corrections? None? We have a second, I guess first we need to.
A second.
To the motion.
A second.
Okay, does anyone have any corrections? Yes, we have none. I'll move to vote on the approval of the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, any extensions? Motion is carried unanimously. Public communications, does anyone on the commission have any communications to bring forth? Does staff have any?
No.
Does anyone in the public wish to address us tonight?
I don't see anyone but the applicant waiting to address you.
Okay. And no special permits, no subdivisions. The next item then would be the action item, site plans, SIT 20-03 Friar Tux Patio with a cam. And we have the applicant.
Diane, are you going to try to promote him? If not, I can do it. You're muted. All right.
So is the applicant online?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, whoa, a lot of feedback though, Gary.
Was that, was that?
I think you're on two devices and we're getting feedback from it. Can you mute or turn off one of them? You're in here twice. Okay, go ahead, Gary.
You hearing me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Gary, if you would state your name and association.
Gary Hobart with Friar Tux Tavern, Mystic Connecticut, 12 Water Street.
If you could summarize what your application is.
Application is for the expansion of a patio in the back of 12 Water Street in the courtyard. The original approved patio was for 200 square feet. The zoning commission had already approved through a special permit in April 2019. Expanded patio to 1,750 square feet and the Historic District Commission issued a certificate of appropriateness. I have applied for the temporary certificate for the outdoor dining for this patio space and for the small expansion in the courtyard. Hopefully allowed to, the application I'm looking for is for 1,750 square feet to remain currently. The small expansion will be allowed until the expiration of the Governor Lamont's executive order expires and the small expansion will go away.
And this, is there a description for what this expansion is doing?
For patio for dining. I just kind of running through, I guess, the coastal site plan. Was showing how the patio is, we use impervious pavers, which allows rainwater to seep in. We didn't take down the trees that were there to help the existing trees. Patio is pretty much in general harmony with the existing neighborhood for other outdoor venues and outdoor dining. The hours of dining on the patio through the special permit is 11:30 a.m. to no later than 10:00 p.m. for dining. And as far as parking, regards to parking, we have no onsite parking. We are, for the downtown, required to have nine spaces. So I am participating in the parking validation program with the Mystic Art Center. And let me see if I can. Should be, I mean, I don't know. As far as the site plan, as far as trying to share it for you to look at.
I think we have a copy.
Okay.
I can share it, Gary, if you need me to.
Go on, if you.
I think I've got it.
Not technologically that advanced.
There we go.
So the patio also has a recreation area that's for the patrons and for other people that live in Factory Square. On the backside of the patio, which we added, we just put mulch out there to kind of clean it up because the courtyard is basically just a bunch of debris, overgrown debris. It had bottles and other shrubs and everything else. Some garbage in there, which kind of just cleaned it all up, put mulch down and then put some chairs in there and some tables on the backside of it where people can, anybody can come through a gate here and just go ahead and sit down and relax. The additional, I don't know if you can see my pointer, the additional spaces to the right side, which is the temporary one. With the governor's stuff, we had gone ahead and just added, we lost five tables and the owner Factory Square allowed us, you know, to go ahead and go to the, add the other five tables back in. So we didn't lose as much as, obviously we can't do inside dining yet, but just praying for nice weather right now.
Does staff have a presentation?
Yeah, I'll just clarify a couple of things. So I think you all know where Factory Square is on Water Street. Originally, back in 1995, there was a 200-square-foot patio that was allowed for a previous restaurant. It was expanded to what you see now without approvals. However, retroactively, they did get a special permit to allow, to allow the patio under the old zoning regulations. This site plan is now being reviewed under the new zoning regulations. However, the same amount of parking is required regardless of the regulation. So he needs nine spaces to support this, for the seating on the patio. And he is satisfying that by entering into a validation program with Mystic Museum of Art. That's this application. So then there's the COVID complication. The governors, one of the governor's executive orders allowed temporary, temporary patio seating under a fast-track approval process. And I think you know, we've been doing that for a number of businesses in town. So Mr. Hobart applied for the temporary outdoor dining for both this patio and for the small expansion that he. Under the governor's order, it can stay open until 11 o'clock at night. After the emergency is over, it goes back to what the zoning requirements are for outdoor patios. And at that point, it will close at 10:00 and the small addition will be removed. For these temporary dining, we can't take parking into account. So because they're, because the seating is so far apart, there's less folks using it theoretically. I think that's it, the cam application's in order and it's a pervious patio. So stormwater is really the only concern here. It does percolate into the ground because of the pervious pavers. I think that's it.
So tonight, we're being asked to approve the permanent, only the permanent.
That is correct.
Part because the other is.
Is administrative.
Is administrative, right?
That's correct.
So it's only the box in the left side?
That's right.
Does it include that circle around the tree for a stand-up bar area?
Gary, is that in place?
No, I just, I never did that. It's something on the permit. We thought about it just to, an area just to people, whether they're waiting for a table and so forth because there's some area around there, around the tree that we haven't put tables, but we just haven't built it yet. There was actually supposed to be something we're looking at, but obviously with the shutdown and everything else, we put everything on hold.
No, but that's part of what you're requesting.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm, now what's there now, yes. Okay, so you have anything else, Deb?
Nope, that's all.
So I'll open it up to comments for any comments. Start with you, Hal.
Hal, you're muted, if you're.
I'm muted myself, how's that? My, I think it looks fine. I guess my question was, was the, the actual area that's expansion, that's the area behind the next door building on the right that really isn't shown here? Is that like the area?
That's correct.
That says C seating, okay.
That's right.
Okay, because that's just a duplicating, duplication on the right sides. It's supposed to show the seating on top of the pavers, but okay. And just a detail, I see the catch basins look like they're going to be relocated that was there. Is there, under the papers, is there drainage there someplace? Where, how does that area drain?
No, it's just, we put down just sand, had sand. Before it was just all dirt. There was actually, there was concrete, just solid concrete walkways going through there. So we pulled that up and laid down sand and then put the pervious pavers down. There's a catch basin to the right that's there now and whether Todd had been talking about the owner, talking about relocating it. But for the most part, when it pours rain, it just goes right straight down. That huge tree pretty much drinks everything up. So that was one of the things we wanted to keep intact in, you know, obviously keeping it to where, you know, the water would go straight down and not having actually run anywhere.
Can I follow up on that? That catch basin that you see there that's shown to be relocated was part of another special permit that was granted for an addition on the unit that's just next door to Friar Tux. That has not been built. We don't have a site plan for that and the catch basin has not been relocated. So you can see the dashed line there just above the catch basin. That's the outline of what the addition would be.
Okay. I think that's fine. Is there any, is there any lighting out there? I don't see any light poles or anything. I see, I see you've got on a some middle, I think there were some lights, but I don't know where they are.
Yeah, actually on the building itself, kind of go around the backside and the addition we had put on there, there's up and down lighting, like dimmers on there, which, which is fine as far as lighting it up. There is a electric actually run, they ran it underneath and up by the tree if we wanted to put wrap lights around the tree and so forth, which we haven't yet. It just hasn't really been a need there for it.
Okay, so I think you might need some comment because it's going to be really dark. Actually, this has been, has this been operating to some degree already?
Yes.
Okay. Isn't it pitch black back there?
No, I mean, there's like, there's some spotlights that are on top of, I don't know if you see my pointer, but on top of this, oh, on top of the addition that was built off the original Factory Square building, there's because some spotlights that shine over into the corners. But there's actually lighting that goes all the way around towards, around the building. That's like over Margaritaville's, Margaritas is at and so forth. And it gets pretty lit up over on that walkway and so forth also.
Just want you to realize that at a certain point, if your, when your servers get tired of bumping into each other because it's kind of dark that, spotless, you say spotlights, but they're floodlights.
Floodlights, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, which are not approved in this, there have to be full cutoff lights, which floodlights are not. So when, when some improvement to that happens, it's got to be full cutoff. So any additional lighting will have to be full cutoff. I have a feeling we're not going to get to see that when it happens. So just like to make that note in there. And other than that, I'm fine with it. One more question, it's just, I see there's, according to this plan, since you cut off the other, the other access, the draw, the, the public concrete sidewalk that's by inches being removed piece by piece, I guess. I guess the other half is going to be gone when your neighbor builds, if, when they build their addition out the back. How do you get onto this patio besides, is it just through the building and that little side entrance? It looks like there's.
Yeah, there's a side entrance, there's an entrance or a walkway that goes around all of the inside of Factory Square that goes from Barley Head up and then comes all the way down through Margaritas past us.
But you can't get to the.
That's like the main entrance right there. That's the main entrance in and then obviously through the actual restaurant. We have double doors that you can go in and out of also.
Right, I saw that, I just wondered if there was.
Oh, back by, back at the rec area.
Yeah.
There's actually, yeah, there's a gate there. And I actually just put in some, there was nothing, it was, he had just like overgrown, it was just dirt and weeds. And I just, I kind of cleaned it out with the maintenance guy, Steve, and just to kind of put a little mulch area like walkway that goes back to one of those. You see the walkway that's kind of making an X right there? It goes back to that walkway there. So there is actually another entrance, entrance there.
Okay. All right, I'm good. Thank you.
Barbara, you have any comments, questions? Are you muted?
She's muted. There she is.
There I am. No, I don't have any comments. I did ride by there and saw a lot of people outside. Clearly not social distancing, although that's certainly not a, the purpose of this meeting. And that is a concern, but again, it's, it has nothing to do with this particular issue. And I cope all as well.
Okay.
Barbara, that's been like babysitting at times, it has.
I'm sure it has and I'm sure it's everywhere. I know all places are like this, it just bothers me. I know you're doing the best you can. I hope.
Yeah, without, I'll get people too angry at us. It's, it's, it's been hard to kind of make people sit and stay in place and try to back from each other.
Yeah, you could clearly see that people were milling around in that walkway.
Hard to herd the cats, you can't do it. So Sutherland, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I'm fine with it, thank you.
Kevin?
I'm sure, I just had, I wanted a question for staff or Deb. So what happens when we get a new executive order? Does the 250 feet automatically stop being granted an extension? Or that 250-foot extension, does that automatically stop or do the applicants have to come back for that in any way?
You know, it depends what the new executive order says. I mean, as of right now, it's temporary until the state of emergency is over. So we're keeping a list of those that we've granted with our contact information so we can gently remind them, you know, to remove their patios. But, but it's possible the governor could extend this beyond, beyond September. It's possible it could be extended into next year. I don't know.
Got it, thank you. And Jeff, I have no other questions. I think they did the due diligence on this well.
Yeah, I had no comments or questions on the application. It looks pretty straightforward. We have a motion that was sent out to everybody this afternoon. Does anyone have any concerns with a motion? I think it's up on your screen now. Has the applicant been given a copy of this?
Yes.
Does he have any, applicant have any concerns with the motion?
Nope.
Okay, and now I'll make a motion to approve SIT 20-03, 12 Water Street Friar Tux Patio to expand the outdoor patio with the following modifications. One, the owner shall participate in a parking validation program. Signs shall be posted at the entrances, cash registers, menus and at all outdoor seating areas to notify customers of participation in the parking validation program. Evidence of participation must be submitted with a site plan application and be annually provided to the Office of Planning and Development Services. Two, the parking requirement shown on the plan shall be updated to reflect the requirements of Section 8.2 of the zoning regulations. Three, technical items raised by staff shall be addressed. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Does anyone have any comments or concerns with the motion? Hearing none, then we'll vote on the motion for Friar Tux Patio. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion is carried unanimously. And I'll move to approve the coastal site plan for the expansion of an outdoor patio at 12 Water Street because it is consistent with all applicable coastal policies and includes all reasonable measures to mitigate adverse impacts on coastal resources. Is there a second?
Well, seconded.
Seconded. Does anyone have any comments or concerns with the motion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the, on the cam for Friar Tux. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any extensions? Motion is carried unanimously. Good luck with your patio.
Thank you very much.
And.
This is definitely a different way of doing meetings.
It is. Quite strange.
Little stressful at times.
You think so? We're getting used to it, yes. Okay, moving on and all business, we have no all business on the agenda. New business, new applications?
We received one today for 54 West Main Street, the old bank to change from offices to a brewery restaurant.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Wow.
And then are they going to buy that $1.2 million property and have the parking lot? Isn't that what they want for that?
Is that right? I don't know.
1.9 million.
How much?
1.9 million.
9 million, it's been in the real estate section of the paper. I just can't believe it, because they own the parking lot at the bank.
Right, and the ones in back are Mystic Pizza.
Yeah. Yeah, that whole area. That's a lot of money for parking and a storefront.
Clearly.
All right. Any, no referrals? Commission reports, reported chair, I have nothing to report. Does anyone on, reported commission, does anyone on the commission have anything?
Yes, I, I've been, you know, sitting at home, looking at Facebook and other media, social media things. And what is disturbing to me, I'm sorry about this, is I've seen a lot of comments from people saying it's easier to ask for forgiveness than permission. And this is having to do with getting building permits and so forth. And that's just a general comment that, you know, I just find it disheartening that people have that attitude.
Okay. I don't know what you do with it.
Don't forgive.
Yeah, well, it's, it's too late when someone comes in and the thing's already been built and the whatever.
You can have them tear it down. They've done that in some places.
Yep. You know, that's funny, we're, we've been slammed with building permits during the shutdown.
Good.
Yeah.
Good.
People have nothing.
What else is going on out there?
Yeah, I don't surprise that the site on next to SIF there, how fast they moved on that.
Wow.
Yes.
They were ready.
Buildings got torn down, the grounds already to put the pilings in, it looks like.
But they don't have a building permit yet. They don't have a building permit yet.
No, just demolition. Why is that, Deb?
They haven't filed their site plans yet.
Oh.
We're just finalizing them now.
Oh, so they have to have that first. But they have gotten a lot of work done. Does anyone else have anything else on the, reported staff? Staff have anything?
Don't have anything.
For us tonight?
Do you have anything, Diane?
And we're staying with Zoom for another.
No, I don't have anything.
Our next meeting?
Yes, I think for at least the next couple of months anyway, yeah.
Okay.
I think we're getting used to not having to wear shoes to these meetings.
I hope you wear pants.
Yes, I have to wear pants. I've got a window right here, I've got to wear.
Well, you read the comics sometimes and say that people wear their pajamas and stuff. All right, if no one has anything else, then move for adjournment. Second and, so the meeting, I guess, is adjourned at 7:30 p.m.
All right, thank you.
Deb?
Yes.
Oh, Michael.
Oh, Michael Kane. I don't know if you noticed that I, I was having computer issues. And I apologize, but I did, I listened in toward the end.
Okay. Do you know about what time you came in? So Karen?
I came in just when you were, when you, when you said to Mr. Hobart, good luck with that project.
Oh, okay. So maybe 10 minutes ago or so?
Could you tell me the bank that you had mentioned? Is that, which is that? That's in downtown Mystic that you got an application for?
The old Bank of America.
The Stone Bank?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mystic River Bank.
Good night, guys.
Good night now.
Good night.